And that's in my district and I don't want it, folks, okay? Police Department's already running it. If you had to get them out, they don't need to come back. The neighborhood doesn't like them. And they're trying to justify it if they're good, but they don't have space for a bar. So, I appreciate the folks to turn it down, okay? All right, number two. Norman Bridge Road, Elite and Company, on time.
That's me.
That's you?
I gave everyone a packet from the Cloverdale, Idaho Association. Spent a lot of time communicating with the property owner. Went over there with CC. It's just not a good fit and everyone I've talked to, which is a lot of people, is fundamentally against it. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
So you don't like it?
No.
Okay. Going to number three. Number three, Tommy, what you got?
This is on the planning commission for rezoning.
Put the microphone up, Tommy, we can hear you better. These microphones, you gotta get right in them before you can hear you.
This was approved by the planning commission recommending that it be rezoned and the purpose of which is a mortuary.
Okay.
And it was subject to a privacy offense.
Yeah.
You okay, Cici?
I'm good with that. I think that's an arduous, that's robust.
You okay with that? Okay. All right, let's go to number four. Oh, this is a moratorium on new bars and lounges.
Yeah, that's Mr. Pruitt.
This is Mr. Pruitt's deal?
Yeah. Basically, I talked with Mr. Pruitt and I think at our last meeting, the question was asked that we have a procedure on how we going with this off-duty police based on that and he was looking to get some information on that before we talked about this moratorium.
Okay. Stacy? So let's just carry this over.
Yes.
We're still waiting. Risk management was reaching out to a couple of other locations to find out how they handled the situation. We do have liability insurance that's offered to our officers. It's only $100,000. They're required to have that and then this moonlighting policy is actually the accident policy for them if they're injured or if they happen to be killed while they're working these off-duty jobs. And unfortunately, the policy we have right now, as y'all know, prohibits them from working in the parking lots of these bars and lounges. So, risk management was trying to figure out and the mayor suggested seeing how much it costs and putting the burden on the business owners to maybe maintain some kind of liability or accident policy. And we're trying to get that information.
Okay. I kinda think it's, just my opinion, these businesses need to be responsible for their own security because I'm looking at the liability, what it would be from a city standpoint by us having off-duty officers work in these clubs. So, that should be the responsibility of the...
Well, and I can say, when we discussed this several years ago and it was agreed to and everybody understood that we would not be working in the parking lots or in the bars and lounges because of the liability issue. At some point, our police chief implemented a policy that allowed it. We'd reached out to other cities. Birmingham did not allow it. Tuscaloosa didn't allow it. I wanna say Huntsville didn't allow it either. And that's kind of where we were and then the policy went into place that we would be working in parking lots. And obviously, we had some concerns about that.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Van.
He ain't wanting to know.
He ain't gonna care though. All right, number five.
You got a question?
Yeah, so what are we...
We got another modification on this one?
Charlie, number four. So what are we doing? Are we looking at number four? We carrying number four over? How are we...
I think Mr. Pruitt needs to tell us what he wants to do, but I think at this point, we just carry it over while he has time to decide what he wants to do with it.
Well, I know what I wanna do with it and I think it's up to legal and the mayor's office to tell us, do we have an answer for off-duty police officers working in clubs? Have we found an insurance policy that would cover it?
We haven't right now. Risk management's still looking into it to see what might be out there. The only other thing that, and Councilman Pruitt, I can't remember if it was you and I that discussed it, when the ordinance was originally put into place that required bars and lounges, if they had security, to use licensed, people who were licensed and registered through the state. There was a consideration about requiring them to have security and the number of security people they would be required to have. And that was something that somebody on the council had brought up reconsidering as opposed to using our law enforcement officers. But no, right now, and what I told the other council members is, when we looked at this several years ago, we reached out to some other big cities to find out how they handled and whether they allowed off-duty officers to work in parking lots of the bars and lounges and most of them did not. So, that policy here came into place maybe a couple of years ago.
Doesn't Atlanta allow them? Didn't Chief Finley, that's where it came from, didn't Atlanta allow them?
I think Atlanta may, but again, their laws are gonna be a little bit different than ours too as far as liability. I don't know what their laws are. I just know that we reached out here and we actually got the policies in hand. And I can go back and try to find those, but we're also, we're also in the process of reaching out now to find out if that's changed and if they do have some kind of moonlighting policy that does cover our off-duty officers if they're working in these parking lots and we just haven't gotten that information back yet.
Well, Mr. Genright, then I would like to vote on it tonight. You guys vote your conscience, but, you know, it's police officers that are out of your district that are riding these clubs, working on duty, overtime, that they're coming out of our neighborhoods that we don't have, we don't have coverage for.
Our staff yet.
And so, you know, if we can't get this figured out, and Charlie, when you weren't here last week, I think there was a total, if we added all the clubs up that we've had issues with, it was about 60 officers overtime. Police Department has a policy for one per 100 people if you're not serving alcohol, one per 50 if you're selling alcohol. And we weren't even doing that when, when we actually had them at the clubs. So, you know, you take just Empire, for example, there's 1,000 people. That's 20 officers. And we're covering our whole city with three or four on-duty overtime people. I don't, I don't think it's fair to the citizens to do that. I don't.
But did the ordinance say that they, they don't have to have police officers, but...
It is in the police department policy that if alcohol is served at an event, that one per 100 without alcohol, one per 50, it's in black and white. So, when you fill out your form for off-duty, say if you guys wanna get officers for one of your neighborhoods and you fill out a form, or your neighborhood fills out the form, they are given that form that says one per 100 and one per 50.
So, in other words, we just need to basically get that rule changed with MPD so that it's no longer in there that MPD is required to be there.
Required, yeah. Because we're trying to be the worst.
Because this is gonna shut them all down, right?
For now, until we figure out the insurance.
But what if we never figure out the insurance?
We're not reinventing the wheel.
But we...
There's other cities across the country that do it.
But how she's talking, is there any city in the state of Alabama that's allowing the officers that you know of, Stacy?
I don't know right now. I know several years ago when we looked, we looked at the bigger cities and they said they didn't allow it.
Yeah, we never did. I'm at the will of the council.
Okay.
So we can talk about it more, but, I mean, to all respect, or Mr. Genright, I think we're spinning our wheels, I really do.
Where's the police department?
That we're wasting on-duty police officers that could be riding in y'all's districts, putting them in clubs when they're attracting this element.
No new, no new, this is a, all club licenses, all...
Lounge.
Huh?
Lounge.
Lounge?
Yep.
But the ones that are working, they can continue to work?
A bar.
Is this new?
Sir?
New lounge or, is this a new lounge or...
Well, Charlie, we can't do it.
What about an existing lounge? You're saying we'd, you'd end up closing them down?
We can't do it for existing ones. This would be from going forward.
Okay. I think we got a...
We got a dilemma.
Yeah. Major dilemma here because you're gonna end up with a, I think we better look into this a little bit deeper. I'm not, I'm not ready to vote on this thing.
Well, I'm not either, but we actually talked about this three weeks ago.
We are.
And I agree. I agree.
We've got a problem. We gotta figure out a way to resolve it.
I think Glenn, what we need to do is make sure, get someone to look at the legal side of it, where it is with MPD. If we can fix that, to take that out, withdraw that from that application process or whatever it is they go through. If we can't do that, we got to try to figure out our, with risk management, I mean, how much longer you think risk management's gonna need?
I'm sorry, say that again.
How much longer do you think risk management's gonna need to look into that?
I would think we could have it by the next council meeting. I would hope we could have it within the next week so we could get it to you before the council meeting. I'd really like to, and I can talk to Chief Harris and see if maybe she can reach out to contacts at the other police departments. It might be easier to get their policies, law enforcement agency, the law enforcement agency instead of attorney to attorney. And if they can get us the policies, then we will be able to answer the question pretty quickly about whether they allow their off-duty officers to work in parking lots. The other, the, how much the liability or the accident policy is going to cost is really, I think, going to be so varied. I think that's the difficulty we're having. It's gonna be based on numbers, occupancy, that kind of thing, so there's gonna be such a broad range. But, but we are trying to at least get some idea, is it gonna be, you know, $50,000 a year, $5,000 a year, something, just a ballpark for you and hopefully in the next week.
Right. And then what we're saying is that we should put this responsibility on the business owners.
Absolutely.
To carry a insurance that police officers can use.
Absolutely.
Well, then, you know, we just kinda, if we have to leave it there, we leave it there. We had that conversation with them and say, you know, in order to operate, you have to have them. You gotta pay for them to be there.
And I would, I would like to think that you can get insurance like that. I just, I have no working knowledge of insurance and whether a business can get accident coverage insurance for off-duty security officers. I don't, I wouldn't know. I'm sorry.
Okay. Maybe two more weeks and let's see what they come up with in two weeks.
Do that. Give them two weeks and get serious on this thing.
Okay.
All right. Number five is a street change. We got a substitute in here that we received late on Friday, I believe, or maybe it was later than that, I don't know. But I've gotta read all that. I haven't read that. So, I'm in a state of, I'm not ready to...
I was gonna ask the council if we could get two more weeks on this just for me to...
Could we get Phillip, whoever wrote this, to come up and explain the changes that we received?
You just want an explanation of the changes in the substitute?
Plain language, no more of your speak.
So, we moved from section two to section three where a resident, if they wanna propose a street renaming, instead of them paying the fee initially, there's a street renaming committee that will look at it and then if they give it the green light, then a resident can pay the postage. So, we're just saving them from paying upfront, letting the committee first decide, hey, it can move forward, then a person pays to continue the process going.
Where's the street renaming committee come from?
That was in the, that currently exists. I think that's a member from communications, so 911, Land Use Division, and I think we have one other in there, Tommy? Oh, yeah, Traffic.
That's an existing committee?
That's an existing.
Okay.
The second one, just semantics, we said, we changed section three to say, if the street renaming committee approves it, then the Land Use Division will consider it. So, we just added in those words, if the street renaming committee approves. And then the last one was, we changed section, section six to say, again, this is with a resident paying the postage, that if, there's gonna be a second notice sent out, so they get a second letter in the mail just saying that the property owner, I'm sorry, that the resident will pay for that instead of the city. So, if there's an individual who wants to propose a street renaming and the first letter goes out, then a second letter notifying them, instead of the city incurring that cost, the resident will have to pay that. And that was a recommendation from the Land Use Division.
Okay. Tommy, you got anything to add to that? Tommy?
Now, start over when you get up there because we ain't hear anything. We, I'm sorry, we couldn't hear anything.
I'm sorry. I wanted to add that when the, if it's approved and the mayor signs, council approves it, and the notification should be sent to all the utilities by certified mail. It just puts them on official notice of the change so that they can, the post office, 911, the, all the utilities, governments have to change their street addresses in their, in their computers. So, I just wanted to make sure that we do that. We're gonna do it anyway, but I think we just include them in the statute. It's not...
It's not mentioned in here?
It's not. I mean, it just says that the mayor will recruit individuals and seek financial support to assist property owners with changing their address or various government documents, utility bills, et cetera, from number 12. I just wanted to add that the Land Use Division will notify the...
Utilities.
Utilities. We do that anyway now, but they never have ejected, but this would, you know, they would be required to vote on it. We just wanna put them on official notice because, you know, an accident could happen, go to the wrong address because they didn't understand the dispatch.
Okay. Oh, is that something we can add in there? Yeah?
I don't have the exact language, but I just got it this afternoon, discussed it with my staff and that seems to be something that could be done. Just slight amendment.
Okay. And then let me ask you a quick question too. When it says the committee, I know we already have the committee formed, but is that normal? Is that what we're doing now, the committee actually rules, votes on it?
Yes.
So, it goes to the committee before it comes to us to be, or do we have to approve it now?
It goes, it goes to the committee before it goes to the, the residents. They have to prove the name change, so we'll have some of this.
Okay. Sound good.
Okay, yeah. So, we can add that part in there, I think. Maybe next week it might be ready.
Okay. Okay, number six, item number six.
Oh, that's, that's...
This is yours.
I have a, this business, I have had multiple complaints. I have a business owner, I'm not sure if she's here just yet, Giggles and Wiggles, it's just, they have children with disabilities that they, it's a daycare for them and the parents bringing the children in, gunshots going off. A lot of people hanging out at this business. They don't sell gas, but everybody's at the gas pump. It's just, it's just really a problem and it gives such a negative light on that area. And so, I just want them to come down and for us to talk about how they can be better and add to the value in that area versus us continuing to have these type of problems stemming from this business that, you know, it makes people like that business say they wanna relocate because they just don't wanna be over there because of the activity and...
So this asks for the show cost?
Mm-hmm. Well, this isn't asking for a show cost, it's more like an appearance. Is that right, Ms. Blaylock?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's just, I just wanna talk to them about it and hopefully we can get a good understanding on how they're gonna move forward because I'm not, we're not trying to shut them down, but we want them to do better.
There you go. Okay. Sounds good. Number seven?
And that'll be the same with me. I'm doing an appearance for this business. They're bringing down the value of that area. The Extended Stay Hotel is located right near Innes Street, so that's right off the interstate.
Okay.
It's become a nuisance for that area. We have major businesses that are looking to leave the area, that are putting money into the city. And what we don't want is those businesses to leave and we don't want the residents to move. We want them to feel safe and have a clean area to live in and we want that area welcoming because it's right off the I-85 corridor.
Both of these gonna be here today?
They will be here today.
All right, number eight. Revoke in the license because they didn't pay the bill? Okay, we'll hear. All right, that's cut and dried. Number...
What was that?
Number nine, there it is, behind.
Yeah.
All right, number nine. Revoke the business license, didn't pay the bill? Okay. That's good enough. Number 10. The mayor's...
L.D.
L.D., okay, that's fine. Number 11. The Velvet Risto Runway East Dale Circle, that's okay. No, actually, I don't think we had any problem with that one. That's okay. Okay. All right. Number 12, Dollar General. We should go see them at the meeting and that's Dollar, Dollar General in Lower Tumford Road, okay? Then you Buffalo Cafe at East Chase, that's okay. It's in my district, it's fine. And then there's, Mr. Calhoun's got an appointment, reappointing. And then I've got an appointment with Mr. Mark Dearland and if anybody wants to question that, I've got his attorney here to talk about that if you need to question about it.
All right.
He just renewed his medical board deal. Then you got the teardowns of six to be torn down, normal, that's bad. And then the rest of it is weeds and ivy. Okay. All right, we have three different people want to talk to us this afternoon. We got the Bell and Graff team, you can get a minute on that one, so we'll take the Bell and Graff team so y'all can get in and get out of here.
Mr. Dixon, come on up.
Yes, sir, come on up. Bell and Graff team.
Bring your team.
I understand, bring teams up. They've played hard, haven't they? They've done good.
They're, they're the reason we're here.
Yeah, they've done good though. You've done...
My name is Stanley Dixon. This is the head coach of our Bell and Graff Dixie Major's 11, 12-year-old team. Melvin Pius, assistant coach, Lorenzo Barnes with you. If you ever have any kind of Valentine's Days and Christmases and birthdays, this is a gentleman who manages the Department of Rosemont Garden that delivers all those...
Well, and flowers.
Those roses that you get, have sent to your people.
The Roseman.
Okay. We've got a couple of budgets here. I wanna make sure I give the mayor one.
Yes, sir. We, we, we're happy to be here. It's always good to come and speak to a group and, and be here. I've been working with you.
If you will speak. Speak in your mic, sir.
Well, yeah, we can't hear you.
They record you.
I don't, I don't speak well here.
Okay, well, you'll be fine.
But, okay, okay. And it's good to see friends. It's good to see friends. Miss Graham was, was kind enough along with Mr. Calhoun this, this past season, this present season, I should say, to assist us with our regular season stuff. And Mr. Pruitt has been a fan of ours for, for some years. I've officiated his baby's basketball game.
You're not much of a basketball official, but you may be all right with them kids at baseball though.
Well, I appreciate that. Our reasoning for being here, we, we, I'm sorry, this is our lead pitcher. This is our second baseman and our shortstop. We brought the primary, we brought the primary people here.
There you go.
That's gotta get the job done for us. I also found out that I, that, and I didn't know it until this morning, Mr. Mitchell, we've got a mutual friend, Mrs. John Owens, that, that lives right down the street from a young lady that I, I see quite often. And I was trying to get him to get to you today, but I, she, unfortunately, she's in Birmingham. Her, her son is having prostate surgery as we speak, so we weren't able to get that done. But we're here to ask for assistance. We're, we're on the west side of Montgomery and it's always tough there. It's always tough there. We're amongst football and basketball and they are, they're the primary sports on that side of town, so we struggle every year to make the league work. And this year, we were extremely fortunate to have a group of 11 and 12-year-old kids that have the capabilities and ability to take us to the World Series. And we are extremely happy about that. With the happiness and the accomplishments come the expenses. And that's where we need your help. And that's why we're here. We've got a budget out of, one I've given to the mayor. I don't know who else. I've got one more. Do I need to give it to you, ma'am?
We need to give it to the clerk.
And if you can make copies of it for us?
Give us that budget and we, we all know about you, okay?
Say that again, sir, I'm sorry.
We all know that you need the money.
Yes, sir. But to what extent do you know, do I need to throw numbers at you or just say...
Well, you're gonna throw the numbers when you throw that budget out.
Stanley, what's the total budget, just ballpark?
Say again, please, I'm sorry.
What's the total budget that you got on paper?
What's the total of the budget?
Yeah.
I'll say roughly $20,000.
Okay.
Now, we've broken it out. We're going to a double elimination tournament and we've broken it out based on not-so-good accomplishments and exceedingly good accomplishments. Four days and seven days. The four-day budget is approximately $12,000 and the seven-day budget is approximately $20,000. And the greater majority of that is enclosed in housing, the cost of being there and taking care of the 12 kids and the, and the coaches for those, for those seven days.
Mr. Mayor, we've done this before way in the past. Charlie, you may remember.
Yeah.
Teams have come to us for extraordinary, not state or something, and we've told them, if it's all right with you, you go to the county, you get half from the county, we'll do half from the city and we can cover, we can cover that. We've done that before. As long as you guys go to the county and, you know, ask Dan and they got a lot more money than we got.
I'm in favor of everything you've said so far.
All right. Is that okay?
We're gonna help you. Okay? We will help you, okay?
Yes, sir.
But go to the county and get them, get them help you too.
Yes, sir. Miss Graham?
When is, when is it?
July 29th.
July 29th?
Starts on the 29th. It's a, it's a seven-day tournament if we're, if we're doing well. If we're doing well, it's a seven-day tournament.
Well, try to reach out to them this week, no, later than next week and let me know so I can try to get you something before you leave. Make sure you have some, you know, some...
Thank you. You all are just too kind.
Does this actually get me a basketball call next time? You remember this?
Don't say it, don't say it.
You know, integrity, integrity, integrity.
Children wrong.
We appreciate you all listening to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, young man.
Thank you, thank you.
Break out. Ken, Ken Nixon, please, come here. We wanna ask you a few questions. Ken is head of our courts and you asked, huh? He sent you, he sent you a plan. So if anybody's read that, you'll know that he sent you the procedures for the bond.
Mr. Nixon, how you doing?
I'm good, ma'am. How are you?
Excellent. I had a question about our warrant process, actually, and I, and not the process, but just the fact that people have to make appointments to sign a warrant. You can't just go sign a warrant anymore. Why do we do that?
Well, you can wait if you want to. Even prior to COVID, we started scheduling appointments.
Put the mic up, Ken.
Or I'll move closer, is that better? Prior to COVID, we started scheduling appointments to have a less impact on the citizens having
I'm good, ma'am, how are you?
Excellent, I had a question about our warrant process, actually. And not the process, but just the fact that people have to make appointments to sign a warrant. You can't just go sign a warrant anymore. Why do we do that?
Well, you can wait if you want to. Even prior to COVID, we started scheduling appointments.
Put the mic up, Ken.
Or I'll move closer, is that better? Prior to COVID, we started scheduling appointments to have a less impact on the citizens having to wait. The little summary I sent you kind of detailed some of the occurrences that happened and the processes. And unfortunately, in the magistrate's office, you never know when everyone's gonna show up. But that's the way it usually happens, everyone shows up at once. We prioritize those things, we prioritize individuals who are in custody so we can process, get them in and out quickly. We process police officers so we can get them in the office and back on the street quickly. So unfortunately, the lower, I think I've heard it said before, every crime is important to the person that it's happening to. But some are more serious than others, if it involves violence or something like that, we're gonna process those first. But if it's a citizen complaint, non-emergency, we try to get them to schedule an appointment to come back. If they insist on waiting, we will let them wait, but we can't guarantee when we'll get to see them. But it's not an absolute requirement, when someone wants to wait, we tell them they can wait. The only exception to that is after hours, from about ten at night till six in the morning. We do have to schedule appointments then because we don't have anyone in the office then. We do have someone on call to handle emergency situations. That was a product of COVID and staff reduction.
Now, are we staffed to really handle what we have? Or are we at the same level for us to staff the magistrates? Or are we working at a smaller staff?
We are a little lower because of COVID and some hiring freezes. But we made some adjustments, particularly closing those hours at night. And I told the mayor and the cabinet that I think that was an efficiency we learned that was something we're going to intend to carry forward. So I would say we're pretty adequately staffed right now. But there are those instances where we're overwhelmed at times. If you have two or three people there and you have five people show up, someone's gonna wait. And people do not like to wait these days, as I'm sure you're well aware. But I feel that we're adequately staffed, yes, ma'am.
So, because I had someone to give me a call and say that they called to make sure they were going to the right place and, you know, that they could come down, and they told them, no, you just have to make an appointment. They didn't even give them an option to come and wait, they just made them an appointment. It was maybe two or three days after, beyond the day they were calling, like three days.
We are going to strongly encourage them to schedule an appointment. If they push the issue, we're not gonna put that out there, because if you put it out there, everyone's gonna say, oh, I want it now, I want it now. So we encourage them to, but if they push, we're going to tend to them at that moment. Or not at that moment, but we will put them in the queue to be seen as soon as we can.
So we're doing the best we can do down there. Because, listen, I've been in the court system a good little while, like you, you know, maybe not municipal court, but a good while. And I just know we are the access the people have to the judicial system. There's no other access, they can't do anything, manipulate anything without us. And when they feel like we don't want them to come, or we don't want to, you know, be bothered, or we don't have time, then they feel like they don't have no option, they feel that they're being beaten, or abused, or something going on with them, and no one cares. No one is allowing them to do anything. And so I just want to make sure the city of Montgomery is not giving that impression because we don't have what we need. Not that, you know.
I feel, you know, we would always ask for more resources, but just looking at the budget and our resources and the way we respond, I feel that the responses are better than adequate. There's gonna be times where people do have to wait, and they're going to be disappointed with that. But Councilperson Graham, I would, if anyone expresses any act of violence committed against them, we're gonna ask them to come down. If we don't, we have messed up at that moment. But anyone who's in danger, victim of violence, we want to see them immediately.
Sound good.
Anybody else?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Appreciate you sending the information out, too. Thank all the councilmen who got one of those. Anderson, are you here? I see Mr. Steiner on the front row for the trails. Who's handling the trails conversation today? Okay, Anderson, Maskey? Who is it?
Will O'Connor.
I got a name here, Will, here, whoever wants to talk about the River Region Trails?
Yes, sir, that's me.
Okay, you got one, okay.
Good afternoon, council, I'm Will O'Connor, I'm the director of River Region Trails.
Okay.
I have here with me today our development director, Andrew Zamanski, the president of our board, Mr. Shepard Ashley, Mr. John Steiner, and also Mr. Judd Blunt here in support. And thank you for allowing us to appear today. River Region Trails is a nonprofit organization serving as a partner to the city, county, and surrounding municipalities to advance the development of pedestrian and bicycle trails, parks, and other outdoor resources for the community. Since January of 2020, we have partnered with the city to help advance the expansion of the Riverfront Trail, identified and applied for funding sources for trail planning and construction, and worked to develop simple and easy pedestrian improvements throughout the city. We are also the organization currently caretaking the property that will become Cypress Nature Park. Crucially, we have invested private money in the development of a conceptual plan for a citywide trail system. You have a copy of that proposal on the desk in front of you. And I asked that you would review that proposal, and particularly the economic and health impact analysis that's included. It's very powerful numbers. The idea of a pedestrian trail network in Montgomery is certainly not new. Our efforts build on previous work done by the city's planning department and the walk-bike pedestrian plan created by the MPO. And the need for greenways to connect our neighborhoods is specifically highlighted as a major challenge and opportunity in our Invision 2040 strategic plan. River Region Trails took the initiative from Invision 2040 and contracted Alta Planning and Design to develop a big-picture concept of what our trail network could look like and the impact that it could have on the community. That's the report you have in front of you. And the next step is to develop this concept into an actionable master plan. The master plan is what tells us how to go forward with building this project. It's critical that we complete the planning soon to be prepared for infrastructure funding opportunities that will arise out of the $715 billion Invest in America Act that's currently moving through Congress. What we have now is a developed idea and a good indication of the powerful impact that it will have. What we need is a plan to construct the system. We also have an opportunity to make a bold statement with the development of Cypress Nature Park, which could be a powerful amenity for downtown and the surrounding communities, as well as an attraction for tourism. This is essentially an infrastructure project, and River Region Trails will not be able to do it alone. We need the support and investment from both the city, county, as well as pursuing state and federal grant funding. We are asking council to consider how council can help us with short-term funding for our organization, as well as long-term funding for project development through the budget, potential tax increment financing opportunities, state and federal grants, and other creative funding mechanisms. In the immediate future, we will begin hosting events and developing small infrastructure improvements that will increase walkability at a neighborhood level, address traffic calming in conflict areas, and develop the excitement for the larger projects. We're also asking for your support and guidance to help us identify the best opportunities within your districts. And we are additionally exploring land acquisition opportunities for properties around Cypress Nature Park, as well as abandoned rail corridors throughout the city. These will give us a jumpstart on building the trail network. Considering the excitement and investment going on in Montgomery now, the time is really critical now for us to invest in equitable, long-term amenities that will not only improve the quality of life for our current citizens, but also attract and retain new citizens to Montgomery and leverage the tourism excitement that we have going right now. With that, are there any questions for me?
Anybody have a question? Appreciate you bringing that idea to us, and we've heard it from several other people, so we understand where you're headed. Good plan, you got a great reputation.
I appreciate it.
We'll be back, yes.
What's the dollar amount of funding you're looking for?
So, we've got multiple funding needs. We are looking for $350,000 to complete the full planning effort, which is a long-term project. Like I said, it's an infrastructure project. Immediately, our operational budget each year is roughly $100,000, and that's what keeps us working on this project. And so certainly not asking council to support us in full, but we are looking for any help that you can provide for operations. And then separately, projects within your district would qualify for capital improvement funds. And we are asking you to help us identify and fund those projects.
Thank you. Okay, I have a.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I have Jenna Bailey from the.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Child Protect, you had, wanted to ask a question.
Come on, Kristen.
I remind everybody we've got three minutes on these conversations.
Kristen can pass it out for you, Jenna, while you're talking. Then that way you save your full three minutes.
Okay, I was told that I had thirty-seven minutes, Mr. Genright.
You've got.
Just kidding, just kidding. Actually, Kristen.
You don't want anybody to speak to if you do that.
I don't have a timer, but I did want to thank Mr. Pruitt for having me here, and Mr. Genright, and all the city council. I'm gonna go very briefly, I don't know how many of you know what Child Protect does and our mission, but we work with law enforcement and the Department of Human Resources in the investigation of their abuse, in their investigation of child abuse cases. And the advocacy centers were set up so that children of child abuse, whether it's sexual, physical neglect, or if they have witnessed some type of horrific crime, they don't have to go through multiple avenues in order to talk about it. Because every single time that a child talks about what has happened to them, then they are reliving that experience. So the advocacy centers were started in Madison County by prosecutor up there, Bud Kramer, and it's so that a child could go to one place where trained professionals talk to children about the abuse, and all of the investigators are there to hear their statement one time. Our services are forensic interviewing, which Kristen and I both are trained for forensic interviewing. We have one other staff member, and then we have another full-time counselor. So we have four people on staff, and we see close to about 350 children a year in Montgomery County. That's the only district or circuit that we serve. So we do forensic interview, counseling is when the children come after they have talked about the abuse. Sorry, after the abuse. And then our advocate does the intake and follows the child throughout the process when it goes to court, and.
I have a question.
Oh, one minute?
No, I have a question for you. For you.
Oh.
Me and you were talking that your numbers skyrocketed during the COVID.
Yes, yes, and I have those on here, if you look under the stats from this year versus last year at the end of the third quarter of the fiscal year. Our forensic interviews are up seventy-three percent, our counseling is up eighty-four percent. And like I said, we are just four people on staff. Child abuse does not take vacations or holidays, we come in at two in the morning. And the kids that come in at two in the morning on a Saturday night receive the same services as those that come in on Wednesday. And like I said, we see all types of abuse, sexual, physical. I will say that a lot of the seventy-three percent that we have seen have been children who have witnessed horrific domestic violence cases, and also the number that we've seen an increase in shootings in Montgomery. We have also, you know, a lot of times we just see on the news the offender, and then we hear the victims' names. But we don't realize that there are children, a lot of times, that are involved in these shootings that have witnessed them. We had a case just two weeks ago where it was a mom and a boyfriend, and there were three children who actually were involved in helping to save this mom from being killed. And those children were brought to Child Protect. Our needs, I want to talk, you know, if I could just tell you very briefly, and like I said, is that my beeper?
You're good, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. No, you're good.
I'm so sorry, okay, because I have a lot to say, and it's so important. I have been at Child Protect for twenty years this past April, and I am now under the fourth chief of police that we have had in Montgomery since that time. There are two things that are the most important reason that I'm here tonight, and Mayor Reed, particularly, you know, as far as the police, and certainly not trying to do your job or anything like that, but I always am, if you need something, then ask. For twenty years, and even up to thirty years, when the advocacy centers were first started, you will see and hear what happens to kids that needed help from abuse, the little drawing, what happened to the little girl. She went to the police, to the DHR, to council, she told her story multiple times, and she was traumatized every time. Unfortunately, we have one of the oldest multidisciplinary teams in the country, and yet we are still traumatizing these children over and over again because we are still having them to go out to the police station to talk to them and then come to Child Protect. I'm gonna tell you about what happened two weeks ago in After Hours. We had a call from MPD that said they had a rape victim, and her stepfather had been raping her for two years, and she was pregnant, and she was at Baptist South, and she had just found out about it. So when they called, the hospital had to call the police to alert them that this child was pregnant. And they said, okay, we'll come out to CID, which y'all know is out on Coliseum Boulevard. So I want you to imagine this mom, it's her husband, she just finds out that her only child has not only been raped for two years, but now she's pregnant with that. And she is asked to get in her car by herself with her child, to almost go by Child Protect, to go out to Coliseum Boulevard to file a report. What I have begged for, for twenty years, is please, can we just meet at Child Protect? Please put the infrastructure in Child Protect, we have paid for an office, we have it set up. Y'all don't need to do anything except please. You know, when they called, I said, can we not get that mom to just come right here? Can you just do your paperwork, I'm begging you, to please look at doing this. And Kristen can back me up, it's so sad. Or either when it's 2:00 AM and we get through with the interview, as we did last week, when we had the three boys that had witnessed their mom being shot, that, well, we gotta go back to CID now, we've got to do the report there, leave the kids here. You know, you don't understand it, and I know I'm babbling, so what do we need? We need a better process for these kids, and it is up to MPD to help us do that. And I'm really begging y'all for that. The other is, we get no support, financial support, from the city. I know that individual councilmen have given us support in the past, but we were zeroed out about five years ago in another administration, and we were only getting $3,500 then. Ninety-seven percent of our cases come from the city. We are asking for $75,000 to help us provide an additional mental health provider for these kids, because as you see on here, our counseling is up eighty-three percent. And I'm not just asking, I'm begging for this support. We are getting a partnership with MPS so that we can provide the counseling in school, and also reaching out to kids, as we know, during the pandemic that they have had extra stress, and we're hoping to reach out to them. We also have seen, this is my last thing, a twelve percent increase in the number of suicide, or kids that are thinking about suicide, and they get in there for the interview, and they start saying, yes, I have a plan. So about ten to twelve times in the past nine months, we have had to call an ambulance to come and intervene with that. So I didn't mean to bring everything down, but this is kind of a new day for us with new leadership at MPD, and I'm just putting it all out there, and that's all, unless y'all have questions, I'm sorry.
Mr. Genright, let me close for Jenna, and Mayor, this is as much on this council. You know, we took the bond issue, and you're fixing community centers. You know, we had a baseball team come tonight, looking at giving them money. We have done an absolute, we have done an absolute job of taking care of our children that have been hurt along the way. And we have not done our fair share. And I think for this council, it's time, I mean, you hear the numbers. I mean, we want to give everything that's working properly, but we're forgetting about the kids that have been through stuff. And I think in this budget, Mayor, I think it's time for us to, you know, do what we need to do, because these are our kids in this city.
I got a question for Ms. Bailey. Hey, Ms. Bailey, we have so many people come down here that say they're doing these services. Are you guys doing the service, or y'all just linking them out to other agencies? You guys are actually providing that service?
No, we are the four people that do the service, that come in twenty-four hours. We have, before we left, and an hour before we left today, we have four interviews that are coming in tomorrow. And so we are the only ones, we do not, there are no duplications of services in this town. We are the only ones that do it, and our budget is about $480,000. We have a very small budget, and we do it by begging and special events, because we are a 501(c)(3). And, you know, I also want to say, if you look statistically, the kids that are out on the street, that are doing the shootings, that end up out at Air Base, they are the ones that are not having the intervention, and are not having these cases looked at closely, or not being reported. And we know that about eighty-five percent of those kids that become juvenile delinquents, or teen pregnancies, or drugs, they have been abused or neglected in some form or fashion. And I believe, I wouldn't be here twenty years with still fighting me if I didn't think that we could do better by these kids, and we could maybe cut off some of those trends that we're seeing on the other side by providing better mental health.
And let me say, Councilman Mitchell, I actually had the opportunity to come in contact with Child Protect by a young lady that I knew who shared with me some stuff that was going on with her. I took her to Child Protect. And when I tell you they walked her through, she didn't go anywhere else, she didn't go, the police came there, everybody came there. They had snacks for them, they had a room that was comfortable, a better setting than, you know, in a sterile interrogation room, but it was more family-oriented and child-friendly. And I mean, she just got a chance to share her story that she had not told anybody, and she's in a much better place today because of it. So I've witnessed this organization just bring somebody that was from the dark into the light there. They didn't send her anywhere else, they did it right there, so they do an awesome job, I support this.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Janet, would you be specific on your ask? I know when you said about going out to the CID, and then at one, what's your specific ask? I know me and Mr. Pruitt and Mr. Mitchell met with you about an investigator or detective being on site, so we won't have to keep going back and forth. So just ask, and have you talked with the new administration, our new chief, interim chief, about what's your ask?
I have not, because she just started like five minutes ago, I didn't want to overwhelm her. her. And, you know, I have been known as someone who flies around the city on a broom, and so I kind of am trying to kind of improve my reputation. We have not even asked for somebody to be there eight to five, because we know how short staffed, and we know when I first started, and I'll even go back, you know, I'm going to tell you this, too. I was a child of abuse and of domestic violence, and I can tell you that I personally sat on the benches down in the basement of the police station when it used to be the juvenile. And I know what it's like for a child to have to go through that. It's horrible. I mean, it's awful, and we're doing this to our kids and traumatizing them even further. So all that we are asking is that when CID gets a call and it involves a child, that they say, okay, meet us at Child Protect. Meet us there. We, you know, we were promised with the last head, you know, the leadership at MPD, we were promised for the last five years that they were sending over their tech people to hook up computers so that all they had to do was bring their laptop. We have a suite that we just, it's brand new, that is just for the police. It's never been used, by the way. So that all they had to do was meet us there. We can do everything there, because they're not interviewing offenders at our office. It's just the guardian or the non-offending caregiver, and we're interviewing the kids. So it's just getting the parents' information. They don't have to go to CID. There's no reason. So, you know, I don't know who your IT person is, but, you know, I mean, chiefs in the past said they would send them right over, but we don't, but that's what we're asking. No cost. I mean, there's no cost to that.
Okay.
Very good.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you, Janet. Appreciate it. All right. All right, we have five minutes. We'll take a five minute break, and then we'll come back to the regular meeting.